Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we'll move on to school committee chairperson comments. Um, I know it's been an interesting start to the school year, but also very positive. I think the kids are happy to be back, the teachers are happy to be back. Um, and hopefully the next week is interesting in better ways. Um, reminder that uh, the mask, mass, mass fall conference is coming up in November. So if anyone on the school maybe would like to attend, we should let um, Kim and Dr. Goan know so we can get registered for that. With that, we'll move on to community comments. Is there anyone in the room for community comments? Anyone online?
See more answers.
Alright. And with that, we'll move right on to student comments.
Alright, everyone, happy to be back. Um, so to start off, we had our senior sunrise on August twenty sixth, bright and early. So the senior class all went out to the front field to go watch sunrise right before the first day of school. Then on the second day of school, Nipmalk Deca, we hosted our annual Deca cookout with the help of the Upton Police Department. So that was a nice day. And then after that, we had our club and activities fair on the front field. And so that sort of runs into my next one with this Thursday, we're gonna be having in a trial run of our extended break, so it's gonna be one long break for the entire school. And that's gonna be so club and activities can meet to try and get the freshmen and sophomores more involved in the club and activities. And then finally, along with the fun senior events, begins the tumultuous, tumultuous journey of college admissions. So um, we've been having meetings with our school counselors to talk about the entire process and how they can help us with that. So yeah.
It's exciting, nice early start to college.
Yes.
I saw a lot of pictures of a cookout.
Oh yeah, it was, it's great.
It's a beautiful day for it.
That's great. Doesn't the front field have?
Yeah, it was more of, less of a sunrise, more of seeing the sky brighten, but it was.
Um, and I just wanna note that we will be, I have a draft email that will go out to the junior class um, to request applications. And we usually do this the day of when we have this meeting in September. And then we'll have a couple of weeks to hopefully have some applicants and then meet with potential next student rep to join Sean here um, for this year. So I'll keep you posted on that, but I'll be sending that email out soon.
Moving on to new business, starting with the out of state field trips, model United Nations NIPMOK. So.
We're waiting on the step here. Hi, I'm Brian Malone. I teach history at Nipmalk Regional, I'm also the modeling win advisor. And um, I am here to request, uh, you know, permission to take my modeling when club to University of Connecticut Conference, which is being held uh, November seventh through the ninth uh, two thousand twenty five. This will be our third year attending. And the past two years, uh, students who have attended have absolutely loved the uh, conference. Uh, modeling when is not like a debate club, it's more of a resolution club. So the students uh, will meet and uh, work with other uh, students from various schools, from the New York, Connecticut, New England area um, over the weekend. Uh, we plan to like, we have uh, booked one of our classes. And I have about eight students attending, myself and another chaperone um, will be going as well.
What days did they fall on?
Uh, November seventh through the ninth.
Wow.
Yeah, and we, the students, they, they should not, they wouldn't be missing any kind of schoolwork. You know, if they do, it might be the last half hour of the last class. Much to their should be.
Alright, any questions? Is there a motion to approve the out of, out of state filter request?
Take a motion to approve the Nipmalk Model UN team field trip in November.
Second way, Becky, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
And moving on to the Spanish exchange, out of state field trip, Soto.
Hi. Uh, my name is Sara Soto and I'm one of the Spanish teachers here. I am here to request for the third time uh, approval to take uh, the students on the exchange program to Spain. We are lucky enough to have um, the students from Leon visiting us coming next week on Monday for two weeks and we are hoping to visit them in April.
Is there any discussion on the um, exchange program twenty twenty six?
Is that during April vacation week?
Well, due to the fact that we have the music trip and they could trim uh, the dates that uh, work best for us is from April the second to the eighteenth of April, which that will be two weeks before April vacation.
Pretty much the entire time right before April vacation, that is right.
Alright, so it's twelve, twelve, twelve school days and then they're out for vacation. How does, how do the kids do, like, let me ask you all two questions. What is the impact educationally to the kids that go? What is the educational impact the kids left behind?
Well, for the students that uh, travel with me, they, they've been pretty good, are keeping up until now. I have never had any issue. In fact, I invited two students to come tonight, but they had games to talk about that. Uh, when I left last year, I left all my lessons planned and I was able to keep up with them uh, through Google Chrome the whole time I was there. But we have so many, so right after that, we have AP tests. And then we have the music uh, trip, we have Deca, and I was trying to find the best date that is not gonna impact all the groups at the same time, so.
What is the overlap in the, the banter?
Uh, they leave on.
Or stu- stu- student class?
Uh, well, right now, uh, because we haven't had approval yet, I only have nine kids interest on the, interested on the trip. So that I know right now, just two students were overlapped with the music trip. And I think four students with Deca. But right after that, we have AP tests as well. So it's uh, the dates are tricky.
But this is a similar timeframe to what we did just this.
Correct, that we had last year, due to the same reasons, it's always the same thing.
Any more discussion?
I will put it out there, I think the only pair of two children who have gone on strip like the, the educational benefits is, is pretty tremendous.
It, it's awesome, it's really good. It's just, it'd be great to see normal vacation, in my opinion. And I, I kinda get to the point where you got the, you have music trip, but alright, you get two good things, life's all about choices. And sometimes you gotta suck it up buttercup and take a choice.
Yep.
Um, but i- it's, you guys know my feelings, I talk about it all the time. It's, I, it's not only the kids going, it's the kids left behind. You teach, how many kids, you have a hundred and twenty different kids between all your classes, something like that?
Eighty-five, yes.
Yeah, so it, you know, three quarters of them get less of an education because you're gone. You know, even if you have the best substitute in the world, i- it's just, that's my opinion on these things, right? And then we pull them off for three or four days for band, and the Italy trip's gone, and the Deca's gone. I mean, we, I, I swear to God, I just closed the school for two weeks instead of one week of April vacation.
This is the travel plan.
That's the travel plan, yeah, just call two weeks vacation, so. Thanks, that's fine.
I don't disagree, I think it's an awesome opportunity and I do see the point of um, you know, losing you during that time. But given we've set presidents here prior, um, out of curiosity, is there any way this would happen in the second half of the year opposed to, you know, overlap, or so close to working around the other field trips?
Uh, you mean after April vacation?
No, no, like the, the, you know.
Sorry, like February.
February, March timeframe.
Different timeframe.
Uh, we talked about that, yeah, we ta- we talked about that and it kinda conflicted with the school over there. Not so much with us, but at the timing for them.
Alright, any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll take a motion to approve the trip as presented, April second to.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh. Uh, now we're moving on to superintendent administrative reports.
Oh, I'm going to give a few updates first, just on the opening day. And then after I do that, um, I'm gonna have Officer O'Connor come up and we'll talk about some safety um, protocols and kinda reflect on last week as well. But I'm gonna start, you, would you, do you have access to a presentation that you can put that up there? We had a great opening day with staff, I think we saw all of you just prior to that. Wait for the presentation. We know if it's not working. Alright, what I decided to do is I'm just gonna quickly go through some of the slides, it's not all of the slides from my opening presentation to staff, but I want to give you a sense of what we talked about. So if you go, go to the next slide, I'm gonna kinda go quickly. Um, yeah, perfect. Um, on what I did was, I, I read a book to kindergarteners at the end of um, every school year. And I pick a different theme and I am cutting the whole presentation down, cause you don't have a, like, you don't wanna listen to me for forty-five minutes. And as much as you love to, you know, to learn about everything we talked, did that day. But um, it was called Imagine a World and Full of Wonder. And I read it to kids and then I asked them to imagine a world. So the first round involved a bunch of pictures and it's not really, it's only giving you the top one. But they imagined a world full of uh, rainbows and they imagined a world full of jelly beans raining. And the last one that, on this slide, which made everyone laugh, is they met, someone imagined a world full of math tests, right? So then we go to the next group, next slide, and there were three that were imagine a world full of teachers. And I talked about all the, all the teachers look the same, like all on different slides, like, so it's pretty funny, so we laughed about that. But then the next grouping, they imagined a world, um, this one says, I ended with this one, full of friendship and kindness. And also I love my teacher. Uh, and that was from actually a Spanish immersion class. And uh, I thought that was amazing, but we um, talked about, there were a lot of, imagine a world full of love, full of peace, full of diversity, full of, you know, teamwork and a lot of positive things. You can see a lot of what we talk about even in our schools about being kind and caring and respectful and all of our values show up at the end of the year with our kindergarteners. Um, so then we moved from that, um, can go to the next, and then I, little tour. Well, I don't know what's happening. What's happening? Took us on a tour and in the tour, um, that next slide that we're gonna hopefully shows up is thanking the team uh, for getting team MRSTOs home. So it's like our district office folks who worked the whole summer, our admin assistants, like get the buildings up and running, our custodial staff. We kinda talked about this, um, our new school resource officer, um, the whole, the whole team. So we talk about that, we go to the next slide. And then I introduce, um, everything's slow today. Uh, I introduced all of the new hires and I get some, when I meet with all of them, when they come in, I'm like the last person in interviews. I ask them all a unique fun fact about all of them. And then I share all of their, I warn them that I'm gonna do this in advance. I say at the opening, I'm gonna share some fun, unique facts about you.
It was quite a good morning, also. It's a really secret for us. We appreciate everyone's patience. Today, it's starting our plan today with follow up. But it's it's gonna be really beneficial for all. It's an existing change for us. We haven't been using this process for a while. That's pretty big. And we were also, yeah, sure.
Sure, this is a major opportunity. That's probably the answer to my question. But you couldn't get it online for the first day of school. Transitioning them two weeks in.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we decided it was originally last spring. We thought we could do that. But what ended up happening in the transition to mental health plans? It it just I I made like an executive call like in a long point in August when we met at the team to say, we did like a test run and did a test run in August. And then we identified some issues and obstacles that we wanted to work through. So the last couple of weeks of August, they worked through.
Please enter the meeting passcode, followed by the pound sign.
On that opening day, like it wasn't, it's only been, we're only like a week and a half in to the start of school. And so he said, after Labor Day and after we're able to like follow that with communications, we'll kind of take it slow. But we couldn't go too far. And because people are starting to submit the last week and they don't want to go too far. But we wanted to make sure we resolved a couple of the issues that came up and just. It's always a goal to get everything done by day one, but it didn't. Didn't work out, but they worked on it for months and months and months.
A little bit of look back there.
So are we still live right now?
We are.
You have backup.
For some reason, it's just just had to watch work today. Sorry.
Any other questions on that transition?
Before we move on to the district safety protocols, I we had a conversation about the opening school meeting. I know we transitioned to four four hours PD to start. And you said you were gonna get surveys from people. Have you compiled that data or gotten any?
I mean, I don't know if that's that's not, she's gonna talk about PD, so I don't know if you're.
You wanna save it for?
Yeah.
Can I just make sure that I'm clear? What kind of date, like what kind of feedback were you looking for?
Nothing in particular, just generally.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we always have surveys after the PD is. Good, good question. Are you able to show the WCBB clip soon? That's from here.
The one with Ryan.
Yeah, the one with Ryan. We were on the.
On a normal day.
We were on two news stations on the same day. So I believe Fox covered the lockdown, which we'll talk about in a minute. But we also, not to be missed, I know I sent it to you, but I I do think it's a huge highlight for the district that they reached out and we followed up with WCBB news, Channel Five News. And Jennifer Egan was here and we decided to focus on highlighting Misco. We do a lot of highlighting here at Nipmuck and there's a lot of great stuff going on there. And all I said is you need to talk to Ryan Robidou. He knows a lot about this in schools and did an awesome job. So if we're able to show it, just so people at home would be able to see it, I'd love to be able to highlight that.
In the Mendon Upton School District, they've keyed in on AI.
This is called Magic School.
Director of Digital Learning, Ryan Robidou, shows us a program eighth grade students use to generate a starting sentence for an essay.
It gives some options for opening statements and then they can use that. They were using that to go back and then go to their writing.
The teacher can see all the prompts a student put in, ensuring the work they turned in was their own.
You can see how students are using it so you can help support them. Like you realize someone's having a really tough time, you know, starting their writing off. That's probably a good time to go have a conversation.
So that was half of the. Other half, you can see it's on our, if we can't get it up, it's.
Footbanger.
Yeah, it's in the news section right on our website. So I made sure that it was there and I shared it out on Facebook too. So if people hadn't seen it, that.
It's good.
You could see it, yeah. But if we can get it up to be able to see.
Maybe working five sentence.
Not exposing them to the technology would do them a disservice.
If we're not giving them the tools to be responsible users of these tools or teaching them how to use AI, then we're not doing our job.
I'm scared as a parent.
Samantha Dubois, mother of three boys, wonders how it will impact education.
I think we're gonna need like a decent amount of safeguards because it's new.
Great point. Hey, ChatGPT, are there safeguards in place in Massachusetts schools regarding AI?
The answer, last month, the state issued guidelines for the use of artificial intelligence in kindergarten through the 12th grade, focusing on maintaining academic integrity, human oversight, preventing bias, being transparent when it's used, and protecting students. Ryan Robidou says every program used has a data privacy agreement with the school.
Which ensures that their personal information is not being sold, that it's not being used to train the systems.
The challenge ahead, keeping up while keeping the best interests of students in mind.
Every day, the goalposts move in terms of expectations for AI. So we have to be adaptable.
In Mendon, Jennifer Egan, WCBB News Center.
That was pretty, pretty neat. And someone had asked if that came about like from our press releases and it didn't. It just they reached out and it was something that we could, they were all doing it back to school. And we said, yeah, we have people who can talk about that. It worked out really well, but just really proud of the work. And it was, I'm a huge fan of WCBB. So I did fangirl a bit and I was like, so nice to meet you. I watch you every morning ever since I was a kid. I've been watching your. Yeah, so that's why I didn't volunteer myself to be on and had him do it because it was very exciting.
Do you know who our AI provider is or what service we use?
There are, there are several like platforms that meet the safety regulations across the state that there are only a few that we're supporting right now. And we have an AI, Brian will be spearheading an AI. How do you call it a team or I can't remember the word he used, but a group to kind of think about how is a district should kind of support AI and its use and focus in these tools to focus on. Yeah, so that's a big focus of our work this year in that group. And I just attended an AI conference for women that we got through one of our associations with Boxer Valley Ed Hub at MIT this weekend. It's great. It was good. It was really interesting. So we'll come back to that topic for sure. I have more details when he presents in a few weeks from now. But if wait, I could shift to the district safety protocols. So can I come up and finish up here? And every year we meet and we had just met myself and both of the SROs last Tuesday, last February. Yeah, they do this like the. It was like this. Yeah. And we met to go over our whole safe support schools, emergency planning like document, which I usually share with you as some of the evidence every year of what we do for planning. In it, some of that, just to give a sense, because part of it is, I know you're familiar with a lot of what we do, but I want to kind of use this as a moment too, just to share some of the high level really quick with the community. We have mandated training modules, numerous modules that our teachers do, and we kind of add to them every year. For bus safety, we have bus evacuation for calls that the bus company coordinates. We, for fire safety, we have drills, like we have to do one in the first three days. And we did that in all the buildings. And then we have to do them in each of the semesters. We sit and we do the calendar for the year on that. We're responsible for having multi-hazard evacuation plans. So we coordinate things usually at the end of the year for different types of scenarios and evacuations. We have medical emergency response plans that we submit to the state for three years that we update. We use Caliber First Alert and Ray of Panic Button. There's two different buttons that we use like in each of the towns. And we have training at the beginning of the year for new hires that the SROs will go through that. We have safety drills for Alice. And as in the last number of years, we've been adapting them and adding another layer as we go through each year. And we have quarterly meetings with me just across for our safety meetings, but also at the at the buildings. In addition, medical trainings, behavioral health, anti-bullying, anti-hazing, surveys, SEL, trauma inform, cybersecurity. So every, everything we're we're collecting in this document that I have here of timing and making sure we're planning out meeting deadlines for the whole year. So we had just met recently on that. Now I'll jump to last Thursday, just to give a quick highlight. I want to begin with just keep coming back to gratitude and thanking everyone, beginning with Officer O'Connor, Kara and the chief and the police. And when the calls came into them and rapid response and clear communications, you know, with us and working in conjunction. And, you know, she can speak to kind of, you know, and answer questions a bit too on the day. But I can't thank them enough. The fact that we have SROs in our buildings and anything happens, like she was right there in the building. And that I can't tell you how much like when you have a potential real situation, like what that's like, but also every day just building connections and knowing that we can trust, trust her and trust, you know, Officer Eller too, who I'll introduce at a future meeting. We have a new SRO in Mendon. But also like our leaders, I mean, I can't describe to you the weight that was on me. I still like, when I think about it, I get kind of like this, I can feel it like in my face getting red. So but like, because it's just the potential of anything ever happening, the weight is just so much. But like the action of the team coming together, the leaders, the quick action checklist, the protocols that we practice, how many quick decisions you have to make and coordinate and communicate with students always first and foremost is just, that is like their focus in the building. It's like, I just, I can't emphasize. And then our staff, just I was talking to some staff after and then even today, who were at the high school in particular. And the fact that like, because we had run so many protocols, safety protocols, they did exactly, they, you had to, you have to make decisions, but they knew what to do, even though everyone felt uneasy. And we had a lockdown here and we had a shelter in place at report. So when the call came in and I received it, I was in an out of district meeting, left it right away. I came immediately back. I knew I couldn't come to Nipmuck because we were in a lockdown. So I went over to Memorial, who was in a shelter in place because I knew I'd be really close and it would be easier for me because Kara was communicating there as well. And so I was over there and kind of helping them and also kind of coordinating with communications once I was back in the district. I'm gonna pause there. So I don't know if you want to give like some highlights. We had a debrief for the chief and Kara and like all the administrators on the following day. I'm just to kind of go through everything. I don't know if there's any like highlights you want to give today. And then we could kind of open up to questions. I know, right? That sounds good.
Absolutely, yeah. I just want to say thank you guys for having me here. Obviously, that day was an uneasy day for everyone, whether it was a parent, staff member, student. I know that that comes with challenges and especially after recent events, just the day prior, UMass School had their incident. They had still been searching for the suspect. And just that week prior, there was the incident in Shoesbury. So there was a lot of uneasy events going into it, which that alone heightened parents, no matter staff members, students, no matter what the incident was. And although we had an idea it was a hunter, we didn't have any ill intent. Out of a precautionary measure, we decided to lock both schools down until we can verify that. And that was our safest option to make sure that we could get everyone inside the school. Those that were in the proximity, it was further down the street. You guys are familiar with where Glen Abbe is. It was past that area, but still close enough. The caller who had called it in said that they were on Pleasant Street walking towards the school. So with that information alone, we're gonna make sure that the schools are safe. Everyone's inside lockdown. That is why we put these two schools in a lockdown status. Whereas Memorial was a little further out and and those are smaller children. And we want to protect them and keep them from getting that information if it's not needed. A sheltered place is pretty similar to a lockdown. They're still able to move freely in the classroom. They're just behind locked doors inside of the building. And within a second, if I told Wendy that she needed to have them puddled in a corner or turn lights off, she could do that within two seconds. So that's kind of where our heads were at with why we chose to do what we did with schools. I know it can be high anxiety around it and everyone's kind of wondering, where is the information coming from? When are we gonna get it? I was communicating as quickly as I could, as much information as we could. But we didn't want to give false information or kind of give you guys anything that wasn't the 100% truth. We would want to be like, oh, like everything is good, but we were still uncertain, right? So we wanted to be as transparent as possible. And I know that that can be kind of frustrating as a parent or staff member of being like, well, we don't know what to do. But yours, my priority is the staff and students that are inside of these schools. And until we can make sure that there is no threat to the schools, we will keep them in the status that we need to keep them in until we can confirm that. And I know that social media can play a significant factor into all of this too. With everyone having phones, especially between two high schools, that added another layer, layer of challenges just with the miscommunication, just like I mentioned, because we were only providing the absolute facts of what we knew at the time. But some students may have misheard something and then they thought that there was someone in the building or then they were sending that to their parents and then they were posting that on social media. So then it kind of gets everyone even more riled up and thinking that there's something different going on than there actually is. So we thank everyone for being able to adapt to kind of the information that they got on a moment's notice. Obviously, we hope to never find ourselves in a situation like that. And every situation isn't black and white. But the staff did an amazing job just being calm enough to be like, we don't know what's going on, but like, let's lock down. Once we get information, we can get that information out. As she said, we use Rave, so we can try to communicate with all of the staff. Rave also notifies police and EMS whenever they send out.
Rave is an app.
Yep.
Yep.
So Rave is an app that we use at our new staff orientation. We make sure that the new staff get it as well. But that's to communicate if there was a real emergency, we can use that app. Or we use a staff assist feature where we can get messages out to all staff members in a timely manner. So those are kind of the things that we use. And we know that there was a lot going on that day in such a short amount of time. But we appreciate everyone's cooperation. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
And one thing I'm just gonna add before we go to questions. I received a question from a parent after who said, I, I wish I knew exactly what I'm supposed to do. And so I sent her a list of what to do. Wendy Bell did, because it was one of Wendy's, it kind of gave a little update. And I told Wendy and I told the team, I'm going to send out a district. In my next district newsletter, I'm gonna send out some guidance. Because after the debrief too, not only were we impacted of trying to manage what was going on internally by like, for example, I'm at Memorial, parents started showing up to Memorial to dismiss. The phone was ringing off the hook. So we couldn't, it was hindering kind of what we needed to do for operations. And people even went to Misco to dismiss and to cleft, even though this was something that was very localized potentially to right here. And I will be doing that. So I wanted to say that that is something that I'm gonna push out. But I wanted to make sure before I did, I know I could have done something right away. I did to them. But I want to make sure that I'm checking to with the police to see if there's anything else. But we also heard that some dispatch for the police also call, 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 call coming in. And I don't know how many are on the police force, but I didn't ask that question, but they're all out. So if you think of like the manpower impact for communications, it it can make things even more difficult and slow down, like being able to communicate with one another and deal with it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's something else to that we can add in as well.
And by adding, do you mean adding it to the that kind of crisis alert email saying, please refrain from calling the main offices? Please refrain from showing up at schools.
When, when, for the first, I'm gonna put it in a newsletter, kind of as like proactive guidance. So it could be something that we could, as training parents about different things, to try to do that in advance proactively. In that moment, I will have to say it was, it, it was hard to get, like not knowing the full accurate info, to get some of the info out, want to make sure it's accurate. But then I was about to put that message in and then we got the message that it got, everything got reduced. And so then we were able to communicate that. I, we were about to send out messages at that time because so many were coming. I was over at Memorial. And so I, I think it depends on the situation. But when I went to do, I'm the one who sent out the district like alert later on. There were minimal characters, like in that SMS, I could put a little bit more. But to get it out as fast as you possibly could, you kind of like trying to send it out quick. And because BBT had sent theirs out earlier, I wanted to be parallel with language to what they had. So it didn't cause more confusion by having different types of language. But I also needed to make sure I was putting the right thing out because they didn't, we, they were in the middle of dealing with it too. They didn't tell me I'm about to send this out, like this is what I'm sending. There wasn't that communication. So I know a lot of that was in that gap too of like on social media and then the phones and students. So it led to, I don't even know what was on social media. I don't, we don't have time to look at social media like now we're dealing like with phone calls and all that. But I know it definitely added this other layer to it. But if we can, and we did as quickly as we could, send an email to let people know. Yeah. But other questions?
No, I, I think I saw a lot of people saying they got texts from their kids. And I think that cell phones in classes, I know high schoolers have them. And it, it can add to the crisis instead of help it. So is it, do you want to make any comment on kind of communication? I know it can, it can help relieve some stress to parents. You get a text from your kid, you know they're okay. But at the same time, if communication starts flowing and misinformation starts flowing, then things can spiral out of control pretty quickly.
Right. And phones can be such a great tool in terms of being able to have that communication. But then they can also have that negative impact of that misinformation. And we actually talked about it and we followed up that incident with a crisis meeting with the counselors, principals at, at the high school. And we had talked through step by step the whole incident and kind of what we can improve on and how we can, if there, hopefully there is never another incident, what we can do to improve that. And one of the things that we had talked about was educating the students more on communicating things during significant incidents of if you don't know the information, then we shouldn't share it with anyone. So we did talk about that educational piece of, of talking to students about it and making them aware the use of cell phones, things like that. Obviously, we know that it's inevitable, they're gonna communicate with their parents. And you're already in such a high state of anxiety that sometimes they do say things that, and that goes for anything. They say things that they don't mean all the time. But.
Kids, no.
So, so we understand that. But if we can prevent some of that, especially sharing it out to social media. And it's even for parents too, because parents want that information too. But then they go onto social media looking for guidance. And then a lot of misinformation comes from that. Unfortunately, we would love to say we can prevent that, but there is just certain things that we can try to minimize. But I don't know that we'll ever be able to fully prevent that from happening. But we want to be as transparent and we'll communicate with you immediately as soon as we can, as soon as we know the situation's safe. Just like Maureen had mentioned in terms of getting communication and guidance out with you guys in terms of what to do in that situation. We did have a lot of calls, whether it was every, a lot of parents were calling each school and they're not answering the phones. They're locked down. And that's only drawing our attention to the office and then dispatch. And Upton, we only had one dispatcher, so she's trying to field all of these calls. But then they end up going out to other towns and things like that. We also had parents showing up to the school, which we understand the concern and we understand that everyone wants to make sure their kids safe. It's just unfortunately, coming to the school in the middle of that. If it was any bigger, we would have had the roads blocked off. But with that, then it's pulling officers away to try to see who this person is coming on school grounds. And then that's taking away from what we're actually trying to do and who we're trying to locate.
I'll open it for questions. I got one last point. I know Upton had a conversation about switching to regional dispatch a while back. I don't know if they ever decided to go that route and how would that have impact on call management?
As far as I know, we're not switching over to regional dispatch, at least within the very near future. I think fielding calls might have been a little bit more challenging for the dispatcher. I, regional dispatch makes it a little harder because they don't know the area as well. Having a dispatcher in our community is, I personally think better to be able to understand the area and understand what's kind of going on. They would be able to field more calls. However, we want to prevent that and only the people involved in the emergency to call so we can get that accurate information out to the public or to the officers to, to be able to stop whatever threat is happening at that time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just have a curiosity question.
Sure.
Have there been any lockdown drills, fire drills or anything prior to this incident?
This year?
Yeah, those the kids, so the staff and students had a chance to practice.
So at the high school, the second day when we did the fire drill, we had, they do a presentation where they, during their advisory period, they go over the protocols. And then they walk to their rally points of places where they're supposed to go to if they do evacuate the building to me. Memorial's was actually. Uh Memorial was actually supposed to be next week, we're just talking about kind of ways to. Incorporate that, but we don't, we know that this incident was a lot for the staff members, so we might. We're just looking about how we want to go about that, but we like to do it within those first like two weeks of school to make sure it's fresh in their minds of kind of. What to do in a situation. And in terms of staff members, all staff gets Alice trained, um and we go through the PowerPoint. New staff members that came in this year, we did that um at their new staff staff orientation. So we try to get everyone informed and then we try to utilize Rave, so then. When things like this come up, we can make sure that everyone has the app and we're able to communicate with them.
It just seemed to be a really seamless process, I was curious to know.
Because we moved some of the pro- that protocol overview and that wasn't there for. But up to that second day, they were in our debrief, they were saying that really helped that we have just done that, yeah. So they're gonna continue to do that, hopefully on that second day now, at least at that, you know, at the high school level.
Other questions?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts or just comments, you know, I guess first off, thank you guys for everything you did to get through the day. And I think number two is if there's small silver linings and everything, you you got to practice and you got to do, I won't ask you more details about the debrief. But take that opportunity, debrief the heck out of it, nothing's perfect, right? And so you'll have dozens or a dozen takeaways, so what you'll add to your policies, um you know, or whatever. Um, like, you know, two other comments just real quick is it was amazing, I will say how accurate some of the data that flowed between the kids was. Um, having a son that was actually across the street texting with the kids that were here and like after the fact, it's like, well, geez, you guys actually. Accurate data at real time, um I'm sure there was just as much inaccurate data as there was accurate data uh that flows through. I won't bring it up right now, Maureen, but one of the questions I will ask you later is, does this make us rethink club at all? Um, as a school with a single administrator, you know, I was just kind of playing that through my head throughout that day. Is we got three administrators with Krishmit at Nipmunk, we've got a whole bunch at Misco, you guys, we got two at Memorial. Do we feel we've got the right coverage at club with other? We talked about having other head head of teacher reading or whatever, something like, it's so something for another day, but I'd love to drill on that. Cause that's kind of the first thing that came to mind. And I think, you know, I'll just quick analogy, I'll just share if you guys don't mind, because I got asked a bunch of times, I think being on the school committee, hey, you know, do you think communication should have been better or whatever? Um, you know, as a as a private pilot and pilot and above, you know, whenever there's an emergency, your rule is always. Aviate, navigate, communicate, and anybody that ever watched like the Solberg movie, as soon as communication was useless, he stopped talking, right? Cause there's nothing you can do and you guys as administrators and police were much better off. Than you were trying to type an email, because if you could do anything that was more useful in helping to make the situation safe, that's obviously what we want. Our team to be doing uh before we're anybody, so.
Appreciate that, it's it's hard to describe some of the internal things that have to take place of. Thinking in that moment was outside. We need to get the schedule, what classes outside, we need to get communication outside to get students in. And then, you know, and it's communicating to the administrative staff, right, in the main office. And then it's communicating externally to district office, to me, to the the other SRO, like all of that, every one of those is a minute. Is it two minutes and it's like trying to handle internally and then once we have enough information, like we do the external. And then, you know, I I love to over communicate as well, actually, so I'll over communicate the heck out of it, right? After a while, but um the timing it, you know, if I were in that building at that exact time that that happened. Like, you know, BBT, it's one building, right? So, you know, we might have been able to get messages out a little bit sooner to the community, but I mean, we will get it out as soon as possible. Like that is always, we want to bring calm and communicate and be transparent, that is our constant goal, so I appreciate that.
Two dozen districts in that building, right, so it's easier to do that.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, I appreciate your time, if anyone ever has questions, feel free to reach out to me, um I'm always available, I'm here for that memorial, so. Thank you. So next up, we have Cheryl.
It's welcome back to school from teaching and learning, a couple of already really cool things to highlight from the beginning of the year. And what I wanted to start with honestly is something that has already been announced, but I think um there's shouting out a little bit more. Our award of the uh Student Opportunities Act grant, which was highly competitive. And the original grant was with the acquisition of the. Hundred thousand dollars this year, this fiscal year, that brings our total to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars through that effort. Um, but one of the things that I thought was worth. Got it all set, was worth sharing with you is that the grant was competitive based on what we had accomplished to date. Through the grant and our plan for the future, and so those two things weighed in the balance. And as winners of that, I I thought that it would be nice to share with you some of what I shared with um the brick committee. About some of the things we had accomplished, um we've accomplished so far and what our next steps are, what that plan, that winning plan was. You can switch, so we're gonna start with this, um those these are the main points, uh SOA and how that recognition. Actually, we've uh we've been recognized for some of the improvements we've already made and the plan moving forward. Um, part of the plan is actually related to the PD that we had, so I'll use that as a segue to share a little bit about the PD. And also the use of data systems, which factored in PD as well. Um, so I just gave you the slide background, so we're gonna skip right over it. So here we go, um what you have in front of you are three graphs that show some of the accomplishments to date. The Student Opportunity Act grant is really focused on enabling, it was a competitive grant for districts. To put together a strategy for addressing the needs of students who aren't uh served all the time. And what you had to do first is do an analysis of the data and identify student groups that you felt like you you needed to focus on. And ours were students with special needs and English learners. And in the last two uh uh three years, so this is between um twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four. One of the things we noticed is that there was a significant decrease in chronic absenteeism um among those populations. And uh that well surpassed the state. And even students not in these categories, the increase, uh the the decrease was there as well, so that's good news. Everyone's decreasing, but for these two populations, the decrease was even larger. I was also able to show that our tardies have also decreased for these populations. And so again, for all students, you see that there's a decrease in tardies over the last three years. But for these two populations, there's a significant one, in fact, for Ls, it went from uh an average of eight tardies. To an average of two, um which is pretty impressive. And so those two barometers, I think, speak a lot to what you hear in these meetings about our ability to get to know our students. To make them feel valued and celebrated and to make coming to school like a place they want to be. The third graph uh speaks to academics. And so what you see here, I don't I don't really like the visual, because it with just a few data points, it looks a little wonky, but. Um, what you see here is an increase more in the first year for um uh students with special needs and in the second year for Ls. Where our math scores from uh for for grades three to eight have increased. Significantly, six percentage points uh in of an increase for meeting and exceed standards. And eleven percentage points for Ls and meeting and exceed standards in that area in math. And so I will be the first to say that we haven't made, uh we haven't uh shrunk in the achievement gap in some areas too. And those are the areas that I was able to kind of say, we need to continue to work in these areas as well. But this math data, I think, was really, um it it speaks to the implementation of new curriculum resources. It speaks to professional development that we're doing with um staff to make sure they're spilt in sequence and they're following uh the standards progressions are there. And I I thought that it was worth sharing. So we'll now go to the next step.
Sure, one question, you know, if you don't, what's the Y axis on the first chart, is that ten, twenty, thirty?
On the first chart?
Yeah.
Let me see, I'm having trouble seeing it too.
Oh, it's probably a screenshot.
It's a, it's ten, twenty, thirty, forty, I just pop.
I don't want to get too too far, but I will ask first, it's ten percent, does that mean the average student is out of school sixteen days?
In twenty twenty two, mind you, right?
Well, no, I'm looking at twenty twenty four, so that blue bar is at about eight percent. They call nine, whatever, but in the hundred and eighty days.
So this is, these are just uh those students who are chronically absent.
Okay, it says all students, but let me say, all right.
But it's in the category, there's a whole nother category we can look at.
Exactly, so these are the kids that like we're uh we're missing a lot of school and there's a barometer for that. And this is the decrease in chronic.
Thank you.
If you switch to the next slide soon, uh so here we go to our next steps. We are working on curriculum on uh uh identification and selection. With our ELA uh team and our and our Spanish language acquisition team as well. And we expect that they'll have a recommendation um by December for new resources. This, I think, is will be significant for ELA programming and that's an area that I think. We've seen some amazing growth in as well, but we need to see more consistent growth. And having resources that uh folks are using and learn to use together, I think will really help with that. The team is excited about this too, so there's kind of like momentum behind it, which I think is um helpful. For uh our strategic use of data, we'll be continuing to um to. Make efforts there and um and there's some platform features that I'll share are we're already working on. And then professional learning, so we're um uh using the lever of both data use and professional learning. To be able to attend to these Student Opportunity Act goals. So here comes the idea of the learning paths, I don't know if last spring you remember me saying that we we had this idea that was, I was kind of excited about, a little bit nervous about. Um, so I wanted to share with you where we landed. What we decided to do this year, and I think about a comment, a a question that you had met um several years ago. Or or maybe it was just last year, I can't remember, but it was kind of like, whoa, that was a lot, that's a lot for professional learning. Cause we identified a standard goal and we instead created the uh differentiation through the different ways. That staff can get there, and so the goal is really to focus on that idea of improving student performance. Um, and doing it while we're reducing uh uh the performance gap. And to be able to think of strategies that will do that well, so we're asking teachers to be able to think about. First of all, find a path that they're interested in exploring, and if you can switch the the slide. We identified six of them, four that align with our deeper learning framework. And two that we really thought that there would be an interest in and that there's a lot of work going into already. That we could uh encourage educators to learn more about and create these actions then. That uh are an ex- that are an action that is aligned to the learning that they're doing when they're doing the exploring. And so what we're doing actually is creating almost like a a deeper learning experience. For the educators, where they get to go and explore their own pathway, we're asking them to take action on those pathways. We're asking that everyone have some common things, which I'll share with you, and then at the end, we'll have these a presentation of our learning. Where the last PD day, they'll come together and they'll share what it is they learned, what they took action on and why they think. Or see that it made a difference, so if you go to the next slide. So we laid this uh map out for them, where we start in the beginning and right now is the explore phase. And we will uh utilize PD time uh that is district led. To help them kind of think about what path they're going to do and also to explore the paths, and I'll show you that in a second. They have their teacher directed day in October, they also have another district day at the end of October. Where we're asking all educators to make community connections. So it's again, it's connected to our deeper learning framework, but this time they're like doing it as a part of their own professional learning. And they can do it in many ways and we'll support them to do that, but examples might be to go visit schools that are implementing. Curriculum that we're already implementing, so they can see how it's being implemented. Or to go to and meet with a department from a different place, that is to share strategies about how to service uh English learners. Um, so and it could also be making community connections that could apply to their own units, right? So we want to bring in an industry expert to a unit, they could uh make a connection that way during this time. Um, then in March, we're going to have another time where we bring everyone back together and we do a reflection protocol. So again, tied to our framework and having the experience where everyone is reflecting on what it is that they're creating. And they're making it better and they're thinking about how they can improve it. And we're also at the same time, hopefully, helping them think about how they can do that in the classrooms with their kids. And then finally, May eighth, we'll um we'll uh celebrate our learning by sharing it with each other. The whole framework is guided by the UDL framework as well, where we have uh multiple ways of staff engaging. With the content, we have multiple ways of them representing um their learning to folks. And uh expressing their learning as well. And this is, I don't know if you can do this, Sam, but if you click on this video of break. And if I like go like this, will you just click again, so it pauses, okay, pause. Maybe not. All right, awesome, so this is the website that we developed and what happens is educators click into one of the paths. And they are, they see a theory of action, that's why this path is important, they have a number, you can you can keep going soon. Then they have a number of professional practice goals that they can use within for their own or incorporate into their own. The professional practice action steps. And then what we have after that is a series of resources that will tell them information about why agency is so important. How you can use it in your classroom, it also gives them some ideas for community connections that they could make. And for action steps that they could actually take, that's kind of starts it at the top, so you can feel free to look at the paths that we're creating. And it's also resources that we fully intend to continue to build, uh asking our our teachers and our teacher leaders. To think of the resources that they think are the most poignant for each of the paths. So if you go to the next slide, um so I'll pause for a second, see if you have any questions about that. So you asked about feedback, this is a good time, all right, so our feedback for the first day was um pretty positive. And it was positive because of the design, basically, which is not surprising, right? This is like, we can talk about learning experiences like this for kids and it's no different for us. Um, so the idea of having choice, the idea of being able to collaborate with colleagues or do something independently. The idea of being able to look and kind of explore and discover on their own with these links that were kind of preassembled for them. They all really liked that stuff, um some of them actually felt a little bit rushed during the day, like there wasn't enough time to collaborate. And stuff like that, um so that was feedback that we will take into consideration.
For the union.
Well, right, or just redesigning the day in a different way, um because sometimes I do tend to bite off more than I can chew, right? But um it uh the co- they they liked the content and they liked the idea of having it laid out for them for the whole year. The co- they they liked the content and they liked the idea of having it laid out for them for the whole year, right? So that they have a goal and something to work towards, and so it's not something else. It has the potential to weave into their professional learning goal and actually their ste- their student learning goals as well because of the focus. Um, some of the feedback that we need to think about in terms of making things better. Is they said that it in it wasn't, it's not just feedback, um that. Um, when we had everyone logging on in that second part of the day to the data systems. We weren't able to handle it, and so the system was very slow. And so we have to think about that either, you know, um. Talk about how we do it, or maybe we have people do things at different schools, but it it just kind of got overwhelmed by everyone.
Self hosting these services?
Say it again.
We self hosting this stuff or is it not in some cloud provider?
Um.
Like is it a site that they go to that's on the web or is it somewhere hosted?
It's on the web.
I mean, it's only a couple hundred.
But it was like, it was like slow.
Simultaneous.
I can't tell.
This is, I guess you don't know.
Yeah. We'll leave the tech portion.
That's right, you can help us with that. Um, so I don't know. So I don't know like exactly the technical explanation for what happened on, I know is that it was like, I was trying to use it too. In the same time as everyone else and it was, we were waiting and we were waiting. So that I think is solvable though, uh and it's not, you know, it's not a commentary on the um programming. One other thing they did say in relation to the data systems is they want more support with it. They said, you know, we, this this site is really cool, but it was really hard to navigate for the first time. By ourselves as they were working in teams and stuff like that, so Ryan and I will be working on some of that stuff. And if you go a little bit, um, and this is one that actually if you can pause, I'd love that. Um, so start it for now, I'm showing you the student explorer and open architects, which is a whole new platform. And so we use the afternoon to let educators explore, if you can pause it now. Awesome. So um, the platform shares with every educator. Um, uh. Bi-level, elementary, middle and high school and rostered for teachers. It shows their students and statistics about the group in these spaces. And also, and it's uh on the left-hand column are every individual student that a that a teacher has. And so what we've been able to do with open architects, and I think this is unique, honestly, I don't know of anywhere else that's doing this right now. Is we've been able to link important artifacts that help our educators get to know our kids. That often the kids have created themselves into the platform, and so they can go right to the platform. They can listen to the students recording of uh what's in a name, so them saying what their names are. They can go to the platform and they can um uh see their uh. Um, scholars' profiles if they've made them. And this year, um, a couple of the schools are trying to do a. A million words or less where they're reaching out to parents and they're saying, tell us about your kids in a million words or less. And they can go right to the site and click on what their parents have. Um, they will be able to once we get those, what their parents have um suggested. So this is something that when we start the year with orientation, we're really emphasizing like we want to do as much as we can to get to know who our kids are. What makes them tick, what they're interested in, and it's really helpful right there, of course, if you look again. This is just where I'm showing the little links. As we scroll up, we'll see all the rest of the data, we'll see standardized tests from the past, so they have them right there from last year. Um, and uh panorama data. And also down at the bottom over here, um, there's an interest inventory for high schoolers. Which, you know, we talked about in uh in our orientation and it's like, as you're getting to know kids, think about how what you know can really influence the class. And so these uh interest and skill inventories can help you figure out like. Who sees themselves as really organized and might we be able to do that like? You know, spread that out in a class so that like different kids can kind of have different roles. So that's a big way that we're using the data systems, and if you go back just one um sec, no worries. Um. We're also, um, there are two other features that I just wanted to note, we won't get into them today. One is called key insights, so the platform now does analyses that are like. The types of questions people often ask and they're just done for the teachers, so the teachers don't have to like figure out how to do them, it's really cool. And um the interventions, which this platform, the student explorer, will allow us to enter. Interventions and create intervention teams so that um educators can kind of work collaboratively through the platform. And we help, we'll have a record of effectively what's working and what's not working as we try to help kids um either. Receive the appropriate interventions or extensions as the case may be. So that was our PD day.
That's great to say, I mean, it's awesome use of Power BI.
Yeah.
And so, so.
I know, makes me want to get in there and start just thumbing through data, there's just so much data, which is awesome. Um. I have two thoughts, the first one, the uh on the tardiness, chronic absentee, those and performance increases. It's good to see our changes, but it it's hard to digest without seeing like delta versus state average or something. Um, it's still very meaningful, but maybe the whole state was down three percent, so it's really five percent, you know, but it's still very, very good data.
I'll put the state averages on, they're they're higher or lower or higher as the case may be for each of the points. Um, otherwise we wouldn't have gotten any points in the grant because they would have seen right through me.
Good for us to know.
Right, absolutely. Again.
But also good that we got the uh the grant. Uh, any questions, comments?
Did you come up with a learning power, is that something that was provided by GESD or you you just created this?
I can't take credit for it. I I wish I could honestly, because I think it's so cool, such a cool idea. And I feel so privileged that I've had the opportunity to kind of build it. I feel like it came from the voices of teachers, first of all, who are always saying. We want to be able to explore the things that are interesting to us. And we want to be able to have it like, know what we're doing from the beginning and be able to work in collaboration with colleagues. And then the leadership team, they like, they kind of came up and said, well, what if we did this? And what if we did this? And they came up with this idea of paths, which I think maybe their Shrewsbury has done something like this. So Wendy had a sense from Shrewsbury about like that concept. But the putting it together with the deeper learning framework and the things that we're working on. Um, I think it's come together in a really cool kind of a way that um hopefully has legs. So really creative.
Thanks.
Oh my.
It honors that not everybody participating in PD is a classroom teacher too, which coming from another district is something I've always appreciated about your PD. Is that I can look at this and see how I might find something that's relative to my direct daily practice, which is really cool. Do the educational assistants participate in this as well?
So um interventionists were all at the first PD, but they're not at everyone. Maybe a techs are at every PD and the paraprofessionals are at the ones that are full day PDs.
My other thought was, um, it's really cool that teachers can come in here and learn about kids and. They they have to be proactive about it, but they can figure out how to engage with any specific student potentially. And that's, that can be meaningful, it can be a big, big game changer.
Yeah, we um, we kind of previewed it when we had orientation and we have a number of people that come from other districts. And they were like, wow, that's so cool. Uh, because you know, some, it's hard, like that's the first thing you want to do as a teacher is really get to know your kids. And if you have some of these things where you can like get glimpses and ways to spark conversations and. Some of what Marian was just sharing today, because uh they were um guests facilitating our our first PLC for the new educators. They were sharing some of the most amazing things that parents have um shared about their kids. Both their things that they love and like how to kind of like, you know, uh respond to them and stuff like that. It was just really awesome. Cool.
Any else? Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Fantastic. All right, moving on, Jay. I need some operations update.
I think you have one more.
Did I? Oh.
Marty's standing, come on.
We did the.
Look at that.
First, I want to compliment Eric, he's got a great shirt.
Thank you. I like your system.
You didn't get memo again. All right, uh, first thing we have to do is amend the budget. Basically is to reflect the increase in state aid, majority of that, it's about a net increase of about a hundred fifty thousand. Most of that is in the is in the um chapter seventy, it's about a hundred forty five thousand there, a tiny bit in additional transportation. We probably need to go through all of these motions on this, although the only motions that are different from the motions from the certification in March. Are motion one and motion four. But I believe we're required to re-go through everything, so that would be the first step is to get this done. There's any questions on that?
Are there any questions on proposed motions? Would anyone like to do the honors of making said motions?
I've had like three years of pushing other people. All right, should we?
We don't have. Zoom in one whole shot, just read them all through and.
All right, motion one, to set the operational budget, amended Upton Regional School District per twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year at forty-two million. Three hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars that consist of general operations within a limit. Motion two, to assess the town of amended eleven million, forty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars that consists of the following. Minimal local contributions, eight million, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Non-discretionary charges are seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and one dollars. Discretionary charges are one million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand and five dollars. Motion three, to assess the town of Upton, fourteen million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars that consists of the following. Minimum contribution is eleven million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. Non-discretionary charges are one million, seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety. And discretionary charges are one million, nine hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and forty-nine. Motion number four is to appropriate fifteen million, fifty-two thousand, fifty-five dollars for the state aid that consists of the following. Chapter seventy funds is thirteen million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. Regional transportation budget is one million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. And charter school tuition reimbursement is seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Motion five is to appropriate one million, five hundred and fifty thousand from the following school district sources. The Upton shared technology is forty thousand. Uh, transfer in from revolving accounts is three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Medicaid reimbursements eighty-five thousand, E and D appropriation is a million, interest is a hundred thousand. Then last but not least is motion six, to appropriate two million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars from the following non-operational revolving accounts. School choice is one million, four hundred thousand and circuit breaker is one million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars.
There are s- six motions on the table, is there a second to the six motions?
Second.
Second, like Matt? All those, is it roll call or just a?
No, just majority vote.
Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. And moving on, Jay?
All right, so we'll talk about closing out FY twenty-five, which I pretty much have done, um, the process of doing the end of the year work, which is another one of those fun exercises. I'm about a third of the way through. Uh, but as far as FY twenty-five, I think you all feedback since we got our E and D certification. Did you get that in between this meeting and last meeting? You should have all gotten an email from the department revenue with our certification. Which is the first step in closing it out. So if you look at revenue versus actual, you can see we actually took in almost nine hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue from what we had budgeted at the time. Uh, when we certified the budget or amended it probably around this meeting a year ago. Uh, state aid was a big one, transfer, uh, actually I'll break these down, I believe, the next slide, exactly what they are. We got about additional two hundred and eighty thousand in state aid, local assessment obviously didn't change at all. But district revenue did increase by over six hundred thousand dollars. Um, transportation, we got an additional two hundred and fifty-one thousand approximately, so they. Apparently had extra money at the end of the year because we got an extra payment at the end, which was much more than I anticipated, but that's great to know. Uh, the charter piece was up a little bit, but I'm pretty sure the charter tuition also went up by a corresponding amount, so I don't really call that a net. You know, the net is probably zero there. The technology, we budgeted thirty-five thousand last year, you just read read through the motions, we budgeted forty. But we actually charged them this fifty percent of the salary plus fifty percent of our cost of the health insurance. So it varies, I believe the employee went on our health insurance about maybe in October or November of last year, so there was an additional charge there. Medicaid, we did really well, so we got a hundred and forty thousand out of Medicaid. But the big one that really brought us in additional money is interest on our bank account with Rotten Trust. That came about because we called them up, we were earning like, you know, point one percent interest, which seemed ridiculous when you've got twelve million dollars in the bank. So we called them up and asked them if they could reevaluate it, they put our interest rate at four and a half percent. But we went from maybe making thirteen hundred dollars a month in interest to making a little over forty thousand dollars a month in interest.
Yeah.
It um brings in a lot of extra money. Now this year we only budgeted a hundred thousand because again, I don't know which where interest rates are going. So it will be a cushion if we have extra money coming in. It's kind of what I call being more conservative than what I anticipate, but right now, I think the last, I only reconciled reconciled July so far, we had about thirty-eight thousand in interest. Um, so, so that adds up to additional revenue, which helps us out a lot. On the expenditure side, what I tried to do was break this out by the various funding or, you know, fund codes that the state uses. So in salaries, we actually saved about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Now, why does that happen? Because when the budget's done in March, we don't know that people might retire, people resign, other people come in, some people leave. We don't get to replace them for a period of time. Things change over the course of the year, so we had a savings there, our contract services. We overspent by a little over three hundred thousand, those are mostly special ed contract services that we had to bring in to provide. You know, student needs that we have to fulfill. Something we do anticipate, we always try to budget enough to cover that, but things happen and it's hard to encounter that. Supplies, we we saved about a hundred and twenty-four thousand, other, that's health insurance, that's um. Well, actually I have the definition of the next one, there's a variety of categories that are under that O six code. About three hundred and fifty thousand, the other one though that does anti- that does hit us and affects E and D is what we call prior year expenditures. The Department of Revenue now requires us, we get a bill after June thirtieth, we cannot pay for it out of. Higher June thirtieth money, we have to pay for it out of the next year's budget. They make us reserve it out of E and D, so it gets taken out of E and D and get put right back into the undisputed fund balance, gets paid out of there. I feel personally the way we used to do it was much better because it kept the the funding expenses in the fiscal year.
Worked well.
But DLR doesn't want us doing that, they love the way we're doing it now, so I guess that's a good thing that they're happy with the way we're doing it. But that's an expense that isn't budgeted, there's no way to budget it because I don't really know what that number's going to be until we get into August or at the end of the month. Bottom line is we basically revenue to expenditures, or I should say budget to expenditures, we basically didn't spend about nine hundred bucks. Uh, now, I'll tell you, when I filed for E and D, I wanted to leave that as a negative number. And therefore we would not use as much school choice money, because I feel like the money in the school choice account gives us more flexibility. Than an E and D and DLR said, no, we can't let you do that. So that we didn't lose the money, but the money ended up in E and D and not in school choice. So originally I was only using four hundred thousand dollars, it was school choice, I had to go up to over nine hundred thousand. In order to make, again, when DLR tells you to do something, you do what they say. So the other categories, technology expenditures, leases on, you know, hardware, software, software, instructional software, health insurance, all employee benefits. dues, conference and travels account, that's what. dues, conference and travels account. That's what's in that six account. And I kind of explained a little bit about what the prior year, you know, what that means. Um, just for reference, this year, that number, that prior year expenditure is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Um, the reason it's much lower this year is because we shut off ordering at the end of May so that we don't get bills coming in. The bills we get in July that are June bills are usually utility bills, electric bills, gas bills. Maybe they picked up trash toward the end of the year, those kind of things. Every now and then a beer, a bill shows up that just, you know, we sent this to you in February, but we sent it to the teacher and they never sent it to us, or we sent it somewhere else. Things like that. So it's a lot lower this current year. Um, school choice, if we look at that account, we started out with about two point four million, we're ending up with about two point two million. Um, again, that's because I had to use nine hundred thousand dollars in salary there. The appropriation for FY twenty-six that we just went through was one point four million, which is quite a chunk of the closing balance. But keep in mind, we should have a profit of around seven hundred thousand in our school choice from tuition versus our expenses out. So about half of that is what we'll have to actually take out of this account here. And again, we'll have flexibility depending on how the year goes. Um, circuit breaker. You're basically allowed to keep a year ahead. So whatever we get FY twenty-four, we spend in FY twenty-five, whatever we get twenty-five, we spend in twenty-six. The one thing that we did get, the payment came in in the middle of July was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand that it said on the on the sheet I got that it was an FY twenty-five supplemental payment. But then Desi said, well, no, actually, we're gonna call that twenty-six. You can carry it to twenty-seven. That's a good thing because that gives us some extra money for twenty-seven. I expect circuit breaker to be around this one point three million again that will be able to carry over to twenty-seven, plus the hundred and sixty-eight, which should be close to one and a half million. That should help us as far as using reserve funds and being in a better place when the budget has to get put together. Um, the accounts that we do for transfer in for revolving, these are the four main accounts, and these are all programs that we run that show profit. You can see the total end balance in all those accounts is a little over one and a half million dollars. We've appropriated three hundred and twenty-five out of that. I'm pretty comfortable that that's not gonna do a lot of damage to those accounts. We've always had it at one fifty. Um, we had to go a little higher this year because as you know, we had kind of a tight budget. We were dipping into our reserves. Um, undesignated fund balance, that's basically the money you have that's sitting aside. The um one billion, six hundred and eighty-one thousand is what we actually have in our undesignated fund balance. It's a little bit less what was certified for E and D, and I'll explain that in a second. Out of that is a million dollars that's appropriated for this year's budget, plus a hundred and twenty-eight that we had to reserve for the prior year bills from FY twenty-five. Um, we had one hit on our, they call it a hit, Department of Revenue does, when they make a reduction in E and D. It's if you have any accounts, especially grant accounts that are in deficit, you don't think you're gonna get the revenue by September thirtieth. They consider that a reduction on your E and D. We had this one grant, the fifty-one thousand was money we were supposed to get from the federal government. Ironically, we did get that like the day the certification came in. Again, it's not like you don't have the money. It's just timing is everything. I couldn't put down that we had it or I thought we were gonna get it, because who knows, especially when it's federal money. So the certification was one million, six hundred and thirty thousand. I was fairly happy with that. Would would have been one million, like one, one hundred thousand in that range had I been able to keep the money in choice, but it's still here. We can still access it if we need to. And then I'm giving you a little bit of E and D history, uh, just so you can see it. I did this basically, I started working here in FY ten. You know, two thousand and nine, but FY ten, we started out about one point million in the negative. We got to over one point six million in the positive. You can see it kind of has varied over time. Our high note was FY twenty-two. That was as we're coming out of the pandemic, we were at almost two million dollars in E and D. One point six is really good. And I can tell you, when I met with S and P in order to get our bond rating, I think I sent that to you. It was in one of Maureen's notes that we sent out. We were rated at double A plus, which is really good. Um, I'm told that hardly anybody gets triple A, which is what we wanted, but we didn't get that. Um, what he said over and over in that call was what we look at more than anything is what you have for reserve funds. We wanna know what you've got, you know, outside of your operational budget, because we understand you're only gonna get what the town's gonna appropriate. Um, I think it's a good thing that we have the choice account, the transfer in accounts, you know, those various programs, E and D, that they're all in fairly good, solid shape. And we can hopefully get through this year and try to maintain that. The goal to me at least is to not have to do like go for operational overrides. If we can avoid that, we wanna do that as long as we possibly can. Any questions on FY twenty-five?
It's a good presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I think we came out fairly well. I was, you know, fairly happy with the way things turned out. I'm working on the, I did the year report, which is not a balance sheet. It's just reporting to Desi where you actually spent all your money. Um, it's just, I mean, basically you have to count for everything in some fashion on this fee. And once I get that, then I'll share that with you as well.
No questions? Jay, thank you. That was a lot of data and information. It was all good.
Lots of numbers, yeah.
The numbers look good.
I'll memorize, you know, I knew every.
At least right now.
Um, so I think I'm staying around for the borrowing too.
I need two more months.
Totally.
Uh, all right, so let's get into the borrowing. So we met with S and P, we got our bond rating. That was all very good. We have now successfully borrowed a little over nine million dollars, which we did as a, not as a short-term ban. Uh, we did that because the interest rates are relatively good. The feeling is that they're not gonna drop down to that two percent that I would love to see them at. What we are going to do in a year is probably do a one-year ban to finish the project because ultimately we don't wanna borrow more than what we need for the project. So we wanna, you know, we will find to that number when we're all done and we borrow the balance that we need. Um, we're working with Hilltop Securities, which is a fairly large financial advisor, municipal advisor firm. The borrowing went out. It goes out to bid. We had, I think you guys had shared with all the various paperwork. I think it's linked in here. Uh, we had five or six bids, I think. Fidelity Capital Markets, I believe, was the winning bid. Um, it shows in some of the paperwork you're gonna sign to the motions you're gonna do that we borrowed eight point seven million because they have what's called a bond premium. The bond premium is money they sort of incentivize you to make them more attractive so that we will accept their bid. So we're actually getting a little over nine million, but we're actually technically only borrowing eight point seven million. I have a much more detailed explanation I was sent. I'm not gonna read it because it's, you got enough stuff on your minds at this point. Uh, we do have to approve the borrowing. Uh, we did set up, set up a separate checking account for the capital projects with Rockland Trust. Um, they again are gonna give us four percent interest rate on this account, uh, because that's what I asked, because otherwise I would have done it through ours, it's sweep investment account. Uh, but this way it keeps everything separate. So I'll have to set up a separate account within the book so that we can track it all. It's a better way to do it, I think, in the long run. Now, you'll notice we're gonna earn four percent, but we're only gonna pay three point seven percent. That difference, and I don't know what that's gonna amount to, but over thirty million dollars. That's money that we get to use. It's called arbitrage. It's money we can use toward the project or we can use toward into the general fund or anything like that. It becomes money that's just bonus money. And that would be the goal was to earn more interest than you pay interest on a loan. Doesn't always work that way.
Sounds like a pretty sweet deal.
I was hoping two percent and four percent. I like bigger numbers, but um. So that's where we are with the borrowing. Um, they just asked me today for their account, the borrowing numbers, so I think the money should be coming relatively soon. You guys have to take a vote tonight to approve the borrowing. I have to send back about eighty pages because and counsel and lawyers, they love paperwork and banks love paperwork. I've gotta stamp them with our embossed seal on all the paperwork. And everything's signed, I believe, uh, Jim and Biggie is the secretary. She signed it. Joe Lake, you signed it. So I'll be sending that in. I believe I have to nail part of copies.
Excellent. Is there any conversation, questions, events?
Is there specific language that we have to?
Yeah, there's a motion. Uh, it was, it's linked into the uh background notes. I think we have a printed copy. Um, it's it's still in my folder. Did I leave it with you, Jim? Let me see. I may have it here.
I think, yeah.
You wanna pull it up? It is linked in there. It's, I'll go search the page and I put it in this morning. Let me see.
So do they have the details?
Unfortunately, I believe you do have to, uh. Yeah, I don't have it here. It must be.
Well, they have it linked in. It says vote.
Yeah. How many pages?
Hopefully, so that's more than.
You know, they didn't tell me that you had to read it. Uh, maybe you can just say I moved to uh authorize the vote as written in the warrant, like we do at town meetings. That's always a.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, and then if they tell me that you had to actually do it another way, we'll uh. Back.
Well, they come on YouTube and watch the video.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Yeah. Wait, you know, I'll try the motion, but do you make the motion to approve the eight point seven million dollar loan amount per the warrant printed in tonight's meeting agenda?
There's a motion to approve the borrowing as written in the.
Vote of the regional school committee.
Just a time.
Uh, vote of the regional school district school committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mike Carey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And I am gonna need, does somebody have that printed motion? Because we're gonna need to have it signed in. Let me make sure that you already signed it to be sure.
I think.
Because otherwise it would be chasing you down. Did I leave my person?
Yes. That's.
Yeah, that's it. Let me see if they've signed it. Madam Secretary.
I can't get into that. It was a unanimous vote, five to nothing, right?
We need another one.
Okay, bond results.
Yeah.
No, I think it's just this.
It's just that, I just, it's overco- that I haven't, there's like, you've gone.
All right. DQJ.
I think I'm done now unless you get more.
And I can just add, just related to this building committee, we have a meeting coming up, but on the uh. The RFS for the OPM was posted and applications are due on the nineteenth. We've had many people who have expressed interest and asked for that patient, and then it'll be reviewed at that building committee meeting. And the building committee website is up and on the website and as well as an update page where we'll continue to do updates that it's a separate webpage, but it's linked off of the capital project page for people looking for updates.
I've got about twenty-five requests for the uh RFS, so I think that's a good sign.
Sure. And also saw that in your newsletter, right, it'll link to the.
Yep.
Five lines and.
Yeah, and so now it's all um starting to get, yeah, we'll continue to update that every few weeks.
Other subcommittees, budget subcommittee has a meeting scheduled for October eighth, one month from today, but the season is coming upon us here. Policy subcommittee, who is?
So we started to look at a couple of new policies, um. To get on the books, um, per Desi. So one is related to career technical um education, the other is related to um new competency term guidelines, um. Based on and paths going away. Uh, so we um the former, I think we need to um have something together by November first. The other is due by the end of the year, so we just started to look at that. And um we have a few policies that we're bringing toward for a second reading tonight. Those are CHA, regulations, CHCA approval pamphlets and directives, and CI, very in the way of responsibility, travel in your way back time machine to May. We had to for first reading then, so they are now coming forward for a second reading. So we need to vote on those two.
Um, are these pretty much uh as referenced in the?
Yeah, if you look there, you can see the change. Like for the first CHA, it's just like updating. It's just like, um, what else?
Bring bring it in alignment.
Yeah, so you can see that that changes, um.
All right, uh, is there a motion to approve the policies, CHA, CHC, CHCA, CI?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Uh, negotiations of committee is on a negotiation year nine scheduled there. Superintendent evaluations of committee meets for the first time October fourteenth. And capital planning is kind of in uh focusing on building, it's more so. So capital planning, subcommittee meetings, plan. Other matters not anticipated by the committee within forty-eight hours, none. Um, future agenda items, district action plans for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and school improvement plans. If there's nothing else, then is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned at eight forty-seven.